For a short-term, worthless lamping slash event venue on a roughly forty-acre A1 zone parcel. The undeveloped parcel is located on Ford's Shop Road, Route 618, and identified on Madison County tax maps as forty-two dash nineteen. Ligon, would you fill us in on that?
Yes, so Mr. Helmey of Ed has been, we've been talking for, he's on the GoToRead. Ahmed, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Ligon, I can hear you.
Okay, good. He's, we've been talking for a year, maybe a little shorter than that, about a proposal of some type of a camping slash lamping facility. He has a lot of experience as a developer. And if you can see from the brochure, some of the broad brush topics and things that his sort of business and his model is about. Also passed an email, he sent to me this afternoon. He recently was approved for something, and he can talk a little bit about this in Shenandoah Town near Bryce Resort. Something kind of similar to this, a little bit different dynamic and location in Shenandoah. So basically what we're doing here is just getting some initial feedback. The, this parcel here, of course, is located on Ford's Shop Road, right on the Robinson Rivers, you probably have not been out there, familiar with the area, have been to that particular parcel. I know we, this commission, I think everyone here is kind of familiar with lamping. And it's something that I literally talk to someone every day at some level, or not about who are interested in Madison, in this type of activity. You know, some of you remember the hearing a few years ago from Presser Ray. And my only kind of concern, too, Ahmed, and he's been very nice to work with, and he's a very thorough and savvy developer that has good ideas. And just the only concern I've told before we move forward is I want to get some initial feedback. But I'm kind of open a few times, and I've talked to some of you on the commission, is that we sort of have a niche here of being, I think, pretty open-minded to these proposals. But I think most of them, and as I had just told on that, I think most of them have been fairly small-scale in nature. You know, looking at anywhere from the three or four units to, you know, in some instances, maybe a little larger. But I think that one of the, kind of the issues here, if he can explain more, what it would be about, is that we really do over the size of the plus or minus forty acres, we do have a lot of density here. And that, and I've told, that's my concern. So just, again, just kind of an open conversation here. We talked to Ahmed a little bit and learned a little bit from him. And first, we have the slides here, and I'll turn it over to him, and we can kind of have a back-and-forth here. So Ahmed, anything that you want to, well, I'll turn it back to the chairman here, let you kind of lead it, but anytime you want to let him come in and talk a little bit, I'm sure he'll be happy to give us some more information.
Well, before we move through that segment, does anyone on the commission have a further question for Ligon?
I do. So I was kind of looking for, not really so much an ordinance, but I was looking for something here to identify as a lamping. I found temporary housing, and I found primitive campgrounds. Where does this fall in this?
We used to call it rural resort, I think that's probably a better name for it. But it'd be an event venue, even though it's part of an event venue is camping. Even though he's not, you know, at this stage, it's not really an event, you know, in the true sense, it's not an event venue. It's really, he's just sort of looking to utilize the camping, lamping portion of what is a special use in A1. So that's, that's the way I would interpret it.
So where does this fall, what do you think, where does this fall?
I say a special use for an event venue. But not, again, he's not really, you know, if he gets to the point where he applies for a special use, you know, I think that he would probably happily remove for the event portion of it. He's really just looking to utilize the lamping. That's what he's looking to utilize, and that is allowed as an event venue use. I mean, there could be some events there, some small-scale events. But again, he's really just looking for the rustic lamping, camping style experience.
Yeah, Ligon, I've been, I'm glad Mike brought that up, because that's the point I've been trying to make ever since the first presentation that he brought to us. The term event, the event venue doesn't require that the applicant do all of these things. It's simply an umbrella, so that he, that, you know, he's talking about lamping, which is an event venue. He's talking about a restaurant, lodge, slash lodge, whatever, event venue. The fact that he doesn't plan on, hopefully, having a five-hundred-person concert doesn't mean that the event venue is not the appropriate special use application. That's, that's why I have been repeatedly asking, why he seems resistant to calling it that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, explicitly, he's not really looking, and that's, going back a couple of years ago, it's not a big deal, but I, you know, we changed that event venue. Me personally, I've been in it for a few years now, I sort of, I sort of like the rural resort as a better term, somebody who had a problem with the word resort. Now we're kind of here, we kind of have a problem with the word event, you know. So regardless, I think you, I think you said it perfectly, Steve.
So going forward, I suggest that we simply say this is a special use application for an event venue. And that lamping is right now his primary.
That's correct.
I'm also, as you mentioned, very concerned about the density of seventy tents on less than forty acres. Right, any other comments or questions from the commission?
Yeah, Ligon, would you explain this? I haven't counted the number of little sites, but would you explain?
Right, so right off Ford's Shop, you have an entrance. And if you look at, you know, maybe if you actually hard copy in your package, you can see that showing a parking area right there on Ford's Shop. And then you would have a, those black lines sort of follow the contours of the property. That would be, you know, a graded, gravelled road, you know, maybe not as similar than, than you have the rural, sort of, roads slash private drives in the county. And then along that, you would see the lamping sites, the campsites. And again, Ahmed can be a little more specific as far as what each specific site would look like, but it's very similar to the proposal that we, at least my interpretation, is what we saw from, you know, sort of right there on Duette Road last year, like four. But you have a platform, you have a, some sort of a tent structure. And you also intend to have a, you know, a bathroom, quote-unquote, facilities in each, each tent. So, you know, as far as the structure, that's something that, you know, can come, if we get to the special use phase, talk to the building official and get, you know, more details on that. But so that would be the tent, and then it would, you can see it kind of meanders through the property, follows the bridges and the contours, and then terminates, and you'd come back out. We've had an initial conversation, had a meeting last week with the emergency services, talked about access, and, you know, again, we have an idea, and I think that talks with Gavin and Brian Gordon, and, you know, I think there's an understanding of how, you know, if there is an emergency there, that, you know, it can be accessed. And they really could be accessed by those, by those, quote-unquote, roads that are in the, that are closed.
What, what is the stuff on the last page that you've come in? It looks like they're serious, they're kind of roundabout.
Right, so, I mean, you have, right, in this area, the parking area. And again, this is very conceptual, I mean, at this point. So you have parking area here, you have a, it looks like a lodge. I'm sorry, a lodge would be right in this area. It's just hard to see it, kind of look at the, your hard copy. And then you have the lamping, you know, follow this, this road here. We do have, showing seventy units on this, so.
And, and Ligon?
I'm sorry, Vic, can you say that again?
You can go out of the evidence hall.
Yeah, we'll, right, we'll get to, we can get to that, but just, whatever, they're done with me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. I don't know if y'all are familiar, I mean, Ford Shop's road feeds off Bean Town, coming off fifteen. You're familiar with the Robinson River, so how that's oriented, you can see the river and that kind of red dark line going up there is the road. So you go from an agriculture area, just beyond that, about a half mile, you start into the density. And then it feeds on down Ford Shop, turns into Meany, so that's density. The entrance is actually, it's the dark line, it looks like it doesn't touch the road there, but that's where you would actually come in, there's a circle, and that's your drop-off point. So the black delineation you see is, is the pathways or cartways, or whatever we're going to call it, to each of the campsites. The little lines, I know it's hard to see, the little lines that look like parking lines, that is for each of your campsites. And there's a couple of dream fields being, being proposed. But I just wanted to basically give you some, some orientation of where it's at. And the only access shown in that drawing is that drop-off point as you come in.
Where's the parking?
Your, your parking, it's, it's.
Oh, I thought those were buildings. That's the parking area. Is this property part of the old, good old farm?
I'm not sure about the good, I'm not sure about the good old farm. I know that the Pennhollers family is the current owners. And Amid can speak to this, I believe he's the potential buyer. So, you know, obviously, the concept of this may hinge on purchasing, but it is within the Pennholler family.
Is the good old farm is, or, and on this side? I guess, Ligon, I guess, from my perspective, the philosophical question is, what are the county's interests with respect to this? And this, this is a situation, I lived in DC, so right in, in town for fifty years, it's far more dense than the dense community in which I live. You know, and I questioned why anybody would want to do this. But then I questioned, if somebody wants to put their money in this, what's, should we care?
Well, it's a land use change first and foremost, so that's, I mean, the idea that it requires, requires to go through plan commission, right. Philosophically, I mean, you know, it's dense, and maybe to a certain degree, it sort of looks like you leave the suburbs and come up to a suburb. You know, but Ahmed knows the market, and he's done a lot of research, and feels like this is something that can be successful. There's always the economic development, tourism is important to the county. I just, you know, just my observations is, when I talk to people and have these initial conversations with people, I, you know, I want people to feel like they can come, bring their ideas here. You know, whether we, whether maybe I think it's a good idea or not. I want them to be able to do that, but I'm quick to point out that I believe the orientation of the county and the plan commission, the board, or probably for things are a little less, lower impact, and probably just generally smaller in scale. It doesn't mean that people, you know, that maybe there's something, that this size couldn't work, but I do think it's challenging when you, when you do have this.
Ligon, if this is a, if this is a parking lot here, and then a park here, and the, and the sites are out through, like we say, are there going to be like golf cart transportations to the sites? We know that if we're going to park there, people are not going to drive to them, and surely we think that somebody's not going to walk all the way to that last campsite.
Right, and Ahmed can talk to this, you know, but my understanding is that there'd be some, you know, golf carts, sort of those type of off-road vehicles that would be at the lodge, where shuttle people back and forth as, as needed.
So each one of these little lamping sites, is it for two people?
That's true. I'm, I'm pretty sure it's two, but yeah.
Yes. One thing, if, I know where this is very well. And also, it's a good spot for coming off of Oak Park Road, or, you know, you can come from a variety of places, because I travel those roads all the time. I mean, it's a great spot to feel like you're getting away from the congestion of a city, and yet, and so I know the sites look really, really close. So I've been camping a few times with great big, great big campers that cost a whole lot more money than my car does, and they're very close. They're very close in a lot of those places. I mean, you're almost at your neighbor, so you bring your own, you know, screen, whatever. I'm sure that that will be taken into consideration if this developer is putting these close together, that you won't feel like you're eating your neighbor's food while you're, you know, at your site. I mean, I don't think, if we haven't been to one of these places, we can conceive, even possibly conceive, what it might look like. I know my eyes were quite open by taking an eighty-thousand-dollar camper to a place that I couldn't barely step outside without, you know. So it's interesting how these work, but people pay for it and they want it, and they want to come out where it's, it's a beautiful spot. And Robinson River, unless it's flooding, it's a beautiful river, beautiful river. It's really, really nice.
Yeah, that, that was my impression when I saw this building, it looks like an RV car.
Well, but that's, it's, you know, he's not going to build something. No one would build something, I wouldn't think, that they are not going to make money at what they're doing and making it so that it is appealing to, to people that are going to be coming out, wanting to rent these things. As far as the impact on the county, as far as money, Tracy, oh my goodness. Lots and lots and lots of all kinds of funds coming through this. It's not, anyway.
I've seen where they've got a designated dream field, but I don't see anything on this potential site plan for water. Danny, you're talking about a great demand of water. It'll be easier to get rid of the waste than it is going to be to find enough water.
Got a whole river, Danny.
And we're trying to clean.
Not applies to drinking. I think Orange would be upset with you, want to know there.
No, they'd be coming from Madison down. Yeah, we'd take it.
Any other questions from the?
Right, they would take it away from that.
From the plan commission?
Mr. Chairman, just brief reference. Our neighbors to the south have a, not quite a comparable, but they have a one-hundred-and-forty-four unit site that I believe is still at the special use permit stage. It's called sojourner lamping. You may want to take a look at that to get some insights as to what this may, you know, what may be envisioned here, because I think, I think Nuzut is right. We're seeing more and more of these types of things. So there must be some sort of market for it. Question becomes, you know, how much density, you know, everybody wants to move to the country. I think that's what they used to call McLean, Virginia. People who wanted to get out of DC and finally get into a rural area. I'm not sure it worked.
It tends to follow them, yes. Any other?
No offense to McLean.
The only, the only other observation, I would think, Ligon, is that you get all these people of these lamping facilities, and they're going to want some entertainment. These are certain people, presumably, they're going to say, now, here we are, what do we do?
Want to have a play with them, Jack.
Any other comments? Okay, we have the representative.
Yeah, Ahmed, do you want to kind of give a few thoughts here, and?
Yeah, you know, we have to read that. It, it did a lot of the venue, share, share a screen.
Talk to our technical advisor here, who might be able to help you out.
If it's not too complicated.
Sir, I will make you the presenter, and you can share your screen from GoToMeeting that way.
Okay, can you see this?
Yes, sir, we can see it, give me just a second, I will unlog. And there we go.
So, yeah, like, yeah, why, why are we? We, we visit our stakeholders in the area, and we, I'm involved in other projects, they blasted off State New York, also Catskills, New York, Yosemite, California. And we, we think there's a lot of potential in this area, unrealized potential. And the reason I say that is that we were the first to, not the first actually, but we, we probably were more advanced than other special use permits in terms of lamping. We're moving ahead with, with, with our project in Shenandoah County. We got, we got an approval there last year. We, we did a great job with, with the community. We even got letters of support, which was unheard of in Shenandoah County at least, that we get letters of support, supporting our projects from the community. Getaway right now is working with us to develop the property. They have, I mean, there's another successful outpost in Green County for Getaway. So I think this, DC is underserved, DC's a very big market. Shenandoah is a national park, gets more than, I think, one point two million visits a year. Madison County has a lot of tourism attractions, I would say primarily in wine country. So we think the target market, and that's primarily the DC market secondary, I'd say, for the ability of this for the other metropolitan cities who wish to, are underserved markets when it comes to lamping, which has skyrocketed in the past few years. Ninety percent of interest rates across the nation. Average daily rates are a thousand and fifty dollars to four hundred dollars a night, for these luxury tents. So I think there's a lot of potential, again, we're the ones who will be taking international risks, but I think Madison County is very, very comfortable. Zooming in on the property itself, I think it's a very special property. We have a river, that's, that's very unique. We can create great experiences around the river without, I know we wouldn't be building structures towards the river because of the ozone, but pathways, you know, view sheds. All of the property has boulders on it, has beautiful rolling hills, amazing views of mountains. It gives you this rural look and feel, so we believe it is very promising. I know Ligon has stressed on the density aspect of the project, the fact that it's seventy tents. And I know Madison has this rural character, and it wants to maintain this character. Yet I think our, our strategy as developers, our principles are very much aligned with that. So though it is seventy tents in count, the way we develop our strategy, and I would like to share with you, focus on that specifically in this conversation. So that is, just, just before I move to our strategy of development, that is a picture from the site of Robinson River, as you see. Also, the next slide shows the mountains from the property itself. It's amazing, I would believe in fall, and spring, and it'd be even, you know, more attractive view of the area. And the reason we wanted to, we put this property under contract and talked to the owners, by the way, the owners, you have to be direct, they, they own quite an amount of land around this property too. So, so when we shared with them, and they're very simple, and they're very attached to the land, when we shared our vision, they were very much excited to, to being seventy, because they believe we add to this property. So if I, if I can share with you our, our development strategy, and I think it's very much aligned with the rural fact of Madison County. It is what we call E, which is Uber, it is the name of our shop, is equal to C, which is community, plus three E, which is environment, elegance, and economy. And if I may just share with you that strategy, just, you know, go in more detail about the strategy. In terms of community, we work very closely with the community. We have proven success in the Shenandoah project, especially with body neighbors who are remotely impacted by the, by the project. We do have voluntary conditions of special use for community needs. Then the two of five lines, indirect lighting systems, centralized parking, so we don't have the guests roam in the property with their, with their vehicle, with their cars. There is a designated area for them to park their car. Then they are, we go, we take them to their tents with electric golf carts, and then they want to walk. And that's why the design of, of the property is done in a way where, once you enter the property and you check into the lodge, and I can give you an example of what's in the lodge later on, but you check in, you park your car, and then a staff member will take you with luggage, with a car equipped to carry luggage, to your, to your tent. And onwards, you would mostly be walking, unless you need a car to move around, that, that's the big job. So no, no longer vehicles roaming the property. We also do not have public events or concerts. And if there is need for wedding, the criteria is you have to reserve the whole property, the whole, the whole property to have a wedding on it. We don't just, you know, we don't have these day events on the property. No, no walk-ins for the restaurant, it's primarily servicing our guests, that's about it. And our onsite activities are very in tune with nature. It's like stargazing, bird washing, meditation. So this, our guests basically wants to escape DC, the hustle and bustle of New York City or Philadelphia, and come enjoy unplugged and online. So they're not into late, you know, late night partying, you know, loud music. And therefore, I think we're very much in tune in terms of our concept and rural character of Madison County, although it is seventy. So I think seventy is a large number, but I also think the way we impact the environment and the community should be factored in. I wouldn't want to stress out on the environment, we, we're very adaptive in our development approach. We're very light on the land. Our tents are built around platforms, the platforms have minimum invasion, or like the foundations are very, very shallow, we don't go too deep. The way we, we, we work with designing our circulation system, meaning the roadways and the, the, the trace systems, the wide roads that serve, you know, our, like vehicles and, you know, the four-plus-five truck, and yes, we did have a conversation with the fire department, are all right in, in the first, I'd say, one-third of the property, right next to the roof. And once you go inside, the property is all nine-foot gravel roads, primarily consumed or used by golf carts. Or maybe it would carry, not maybe, we would make sure it's designed to carry a rush truck in case of emergency. We also have, we, we usually plan to have an emergency response stand, and our staff would be trained on it. And we will have a designated EMS golf cart designed for such emergencies in case, right before, in case there's an emergency, and you would be acting as the first response. So that's why we, we, we work on having very narrow nine-foot trays throughout the property, and these are the ones that connect to the tents. When we design our circulation system, we, we go with the contours and the property of the land. That way, we wouldn't vice grating of the property, so we don't damage the land. on the property, so we don't damage the land. Um, the way we, we, we design, uh, uh, when it comes to traffic, I wanna stress on something related to traffic, because again, seventy tents means quite a few cars checking in and checking out every day. By observing from experience, we have very limited, uh, traffic, usually, uh, based on traffic studies that we did elsewhere, uh, our guests would check in usually at the peak period is one PM, and it's usually around seven cars entering, eleven exiting during that period, also checking out, or coming in from there, you know, from the day, it's around five PM, and it's around fifteen entering, eight exiting, based on the density of settlements. And our guests usually that have breakfast in the morning, at the lodge, they don't stay in the lodge, they usually take their car, have a go hiking, ride the skyline, go to winery, enjoy some local restaurant, then they come back in the evening, have lunch, you know, sit around the fire pit, have a drink or two, and then goes, our quiet time is usually around ten or eleven PM. Um, so, so they're not, there, there are no multiple shifts back and forth, back and forth on the property, and that minimizes the load on the road. We've talked to Willis, um, in DLO, and he did say the side distance and the width of the road allow. We might need to do a commercial entrance, but, uh, other than that, the dust side distance, the way the, the road is designed, it's, will allow this kind of, uh, this kind of outpost, or this kind of project on the property. Um, in terms of that, we really organize our design to hugely blend with existing natural elements. This property has amazing photography, amazing views, boulders, has a river, it has, uh, it doesn't have much vegetation on it, but we also add to that by, we try to augment the charm of the land with our architecture and landscape design. Um, I, I'm, I'm very confident that, you know, this, this outpost would get landmarked in Madison County, uh, like the ones that are being developed across the nation, it is a booming industry, there's so much demand for it. Uh, usually with this kind of project, we'd be investing fifteen million dollars, papered, of course, depending on, on many unknowns at this point, like the setting systems, the waves, and so forth, but it would be a fifteen million, fifteen million dollar investment for these seventy tents. Um, in terms of economy, the reason we want seventy tents is this kind of hospitality requires, um, numbers. The amount of infrastructure and roads and, um, common facilities require more daily rent. If we go below that, usually it's a very challenging, uh, very challenging, uh, project from a financial standpoint, and I think, uh, I believe you at the town commission do want successful projects, I don't think you, you want us to be wasting your time with a project that maybe gets a special use permit but never materializes, because no one wants to give us money for it, whether it's equity or debt. Uh, I also think that you want us to succeed, you don't want us to visit a property and then abandon it in a couple of years and just leave property, abandoned, and, uh, basically, even the local economy doesn't benefit from that. Uh, we, we very much focus on what we call, uh, the backward vintage of the economy, we source locally, we very much focus on hiring locals, probably be hiring around forty employees, uh, between part timers and full timers, uh, we try to, you know, uh, source from surrounding universities for internships, um, and also, of course, the tax money, uh, is, is also quite significant. So, so having said so, if, if, if I have, do I have like five minutes, or am I taking too long?
Uh, Ahmed.
No, you're doing great, I think, uh, one question that we've just had, would this be year-round, you anticipate, or just kind of being a, a march through November kind of thing, how do you, how do you anticipate that?
It is a march through November kind of, uh, product, uh, project, I mean, seasonality makes a difference. Uh, given the type of, uh, accommodations that we have, the tents, uh, they are insulated tents, there is climate control on each and every tent, there's on-screen bathroom and everything, yet there's so much you can do to control climate, when both demand, this area really drops in order. Uh, so, it is, it is a season. We try to extend the season as much as possible, but, uh, I'd say November will be, this is when, when we close, and then we open in, in March, probably March.
Does anyone on the plan commission have a question?
How ma- how many people are allowed per tent?
I'm, I'm sorry?
How many people are la- allowed per tent?
So, it ranges, the, 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 the tent site is ranging between one hundred and fifty square feet, it's, it's six hundred square feet, so there is between two to four individuals per tent. Uh, that's, that, yeah, that's the limit.
So, you, you're, you're anticipating, uh, different sizes of, of tents for the glamping? Cause you're, you're...
No, I... Yeah, different sizes of tents, so it ranges between one hundred and fifty to six hundred square feet.
Any other questions?
I want the Tracy to go. We will collect transient oxygen tax off of this?
Yes. Yes.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
But, I was just asking if, uh, of course, transient oxygen taxes would be, that would be sort of the main from the county revenue, would be the transient, the monthly transient oxygen tax.
Yeah.
Any other questions? You, you know, sort of from my experience, uh, I think it's, I think Ahmed, Ahmed brings up a good point, he does have a lot of experience in this, and he's got a, a proven track record, um, and my, my intent here was to get this, just so, get some feedback, and, you know, I, I know it's not a vote, but, you know, it, it, it's just one of these things, it's a non-starter, I think a lot of that comes back to the feedback in the community. Uh, you know, and maybe, uh, one of the things, maybe from the lesson we learned a few years ago is, uh, maybe, if Ahmed was interested in this, is to, doesn't have to be a planning commission thing, but I would more than have to facilitate some sort of a, a, a community meeting, get that, just to put it out, and say, look, you know, one afternoon, if you wanna come and, and, and talk to Ahmed and his folks, and sit down and talk in a formal, a way, that might be another step in this process, and to get an idea of what the folks in that neighborhood, uh, would think before we even go to a, to a public hearing. I mean, would that be something, just again, I'm sort of thinking here, would that be something that maybe could be useful, and if the plan commission members want to come, obviously, they can come, but, um, that, that might at least give us an idea of, of what sort of concerns and what, what pushback we might get from, uh, folks in that area.
Yeah, that's, maybe head off one of these one AM meetings.
Uh, so, you know, I, I can talk to Ahmed a little bit, maybe that might be, uh, uh, another, uh, step that we could do here the next month or so, before maybe we get a formal application, if that's something that, you know, we think it's a good idea.
Absolutely.
Maybe that's something I think...
Why would we not do that?
Yeah, I mean, if it's a public hearing, we're just gonna say, just meet, meet...
Maybe that's something Tracy could hear, but, right.
And he had offered to do that too, and he's already on top of that, so I think it's a great idea.
Ahmed, would that sound like something that maybe could be a step we could take here the next, uh, thirty, forty-five days?
I would love to, I mean, uh, that's exactly our strategy, I mean, if you look at the slide right now, these are, these are actual pictures of our meetings that we had with the community in Birdhaven, in Shenandoah, and that's the property, that is good property, because of where. We had multiple meetings with them, we had a lot of conversations, and we didn't adapt the project to their needs, having natural streams, every breeze between us and neighbors, way before the step back, way more than the step backs. We did a lot of work regarding forest conservation and forest safety, hunting pres- hunting reservations, because mostly they were hunters, they were very much concerned, because we were, we were surrounded by national forests, and we wanted to make sure that we're not hurting their hobbies, and, you know, their interest in the area. Uh, so, definitely, this is something we'd be very much interested in, and honestly, we wouldn't move forward with the projects if we don't get the plan. Probably.
Any other questions from the plan commission? Okay, I'll work, I'll work, keep writing the wood, set that up here, uh, sometime, month or so. All right, uh, in that case, is there any public comment? Any public comment at this point? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll be in touch, Ahmed, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.